At this time, we will call this meeting to an end. In the meantime, I plead with allegiance. I plead allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Wilson.
Person.
Person.
Bradford.
Fraser.
Wolford.
Fraser.
Nichols.
Here.
Ware.
Ware.
Sanders.
Sanders.
Okay, all the attendance, we do have a forum. And thank you all for doing this, is attendance to this evening. Uh, first we will go ahead and proceed with the minutes of the last board meeting, the minutes for the April twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, board meeting. At this time, I need a motion, a second for approval, please.
Motion.
Most of my trustees Sanders. Second, my trustee Ware. Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Uh, Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Next, we have payroll and accounts paid. This time, I need a motion and a second for approval, please.
So move by.
Motion by trustee Pearson.
A second.
Second by trustee Bradford.
I have a question, Mr. Wilson. Yes, our trustee, on your, uh, opening. And paid invoices. Last meeting, uh, here was, my croquet was not on there to be paid. Be voted on, seventy-three hundred dollars, you got to pay the rest of it. Now, this meeting here is on the page. So it was not voted on at the meeting prior to this.
Uh-huh.
So it is on the page this time.
Uh-huh.
So that wasn't put on there to be voted on last time.
Okay.
It's a type of what everybody needs to be put on there to be voted on.
Okay. And how is it? Thank you, trustee. This time, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Moving forward, uh, no unfinished business, uh, we will do business here. Uh, this, we requesting the transfer of funds from one TIF to another TIF. This is our annual, uh, annual golf payments, uh, from the golf course. And, uh, this is, uh, something that has been occurring since we've had golf course. So, uh, just transferring, uh, funds from TIF one to, uh, TIF two again. At this time, I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Most of my trustee Sanders.
Second.
Second by trustee Wolford. Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Jeff.
Bradford. Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Next, we have resolution number sixteen dash ten fifty-seven. Uh, attorney Secodens, just briefly, just touch on that real quick.
Uh, yes, this is a, really a correction of the resolution that was passed last month. After we passed that resolution, the attorney for the uncertified clerk's attorney case, that we contacted me and said he made an error in multiplication and, uh, and it amounts to a two-cent error for two places in the wage rates of the collective bargaining agreement. So, in, on page three of the collective bargaining agreement, if what did say fifty dollars and sixty-eight cents is supposed to say fifty dollars and seventy cents, the one, and, uh, and, uh, the next paragraph says thirteen dollars and forty-six cents for the community, for the community service, as it's supposed to say. It says for now thirteen dollars and forty-six cents, it was thirteen dollars and forty-four cents. So, it's basically an error multiplication that the union attorney made. He's asked us to correct that, that amounts to about forty dollars a year. So, uh, we should correct it. And, uh, so I ask that motion be made to do that.
Rest of the contract is fine?
Rest of the contract is fine, that's only.
We appreciate that.
Hence, the rest of the contract is exactly as was passed last year.
Thank you, council. At this time, I need a motion and a second for approval, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Bradford, second.
Okay.
Second by trustee Wolford. Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Next, we have ordinance from sixteen dash thirteen two-five. Ordinance providing for the rejection of an application or denial of permit or license issued while the owner of the home is worthy. The application is indebted to the village of Cahokia. Uh, basically what this is, if anyone owes us any type of money that's here in the village, uh, they cannot, uh, receive a license or permit. And so, this just ensures that, uh, all dads are paid like before these individuals can receive a license or permit. Okay? Any questions? Uh, at this time, I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware.
Second motion.
Uh, second by trustee Pearson. Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Uh, next, we have, uh, the, we want to table the, uh, one hashtag girlish, who's here? Ms. Moran? All right. Uh, next, we have hashtag girlish, a business here at fourteen ninety-three Kemp Jackson Road, here in Cahokia, one six-two-two-zero-six. Uh, this time, I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware, uh, trustee Sanders. Uh, second by.
Second.
By trustee Ware. Uh, roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Next, that girlish approved. Ms. Moran, are you here? Yes. And next, we have a, uh, business here, Just to Claiming Service, uh, for any of the business owners here, uh, for that here, uh, Just to Claiming Service. Okay? Uh, this is located at two, uh, two zero zero eight Dolores, in, uh, here in Cahokia, six-two-two-zero-six. Okay? At this time, a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware. Second by trustee Sanders. Roll call, please. Pearson.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. All right. Uh, moving forward, we have, uh, number four from the chief, one of the attorney, one executive session is needed this evening, that we have public comments. Uh, the first person that we have here is Miranda Moran.
Okay. I have a question. The chief's not here. Don't we have anybody for report on weekends? We had to show them through either different students, law degree related, the, uh, Dallas General, and, uh, Cowboys, and Redskins all broke into. It's matching that kind of thing, unless you say?
Uh, chief, if we happen, I'll take some. Yeah, we got the lead on it, we're following up on it. I'm not confident that it's all of itself. All right. Okay. Uh, Mr. Wade, Wade.
How you doing, man? Um, first of all, you know, I want to say something about roads. The road creates worse and worse day by day. Um, I mean, there's weeds growing up in the roads, uh, paths are getting worse. Um, matter of fact, now my, they, our front house, down, uh, the roads came in and, uh, common roads they combined and put a little spray paint on it. That was it. There's just much water in that hole. Uh, if I would've hit my bike, I would've been probably taking my angles. Um, and there's a lot of places out there on Cahokia. I don't understand why none of the roads are being done. Second, I'm talking to Brenda Shaw, spoken for today about the yards that they can't, she said they cannot cut the back yards of the private home. Um, why are we cutting the front yards in? Aren't they supposed to, if there's a private option, then it's responsible for the front and backyard? And not just the backyard? The backyard, I know they need cleaned up, people were dumping trash back there. Uh, she said the county cannot get back to those private property. Um, so, we need to get something done with the backyard. Uh, we have to go through the people who own the house? Or, we can just go back there to ourselves? What can we do? Uh, but it has to be done. Um, I guess that's all I have. Um, I don't know whether to start working on the line fixtures and walking back up the park yet, uh, that I haven't seen. I know they fixed the bridge, that, that a week ago now. Um, and again, I do appreciate getting that done so quickly. Um, well, now, I guess that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Next, we have, Miss Donna, you?
Um, today, I was going to bring a little boy that's eleven years old, and the more and more I thought about it, because he kept asking me what there was to do, what were we gonna do for the ninety days being out of, you know, the school? And, at first, I thought it was a great idea, and then I thought, no, it probably wouldn't be, because I was afraid he wouldn't answer him. And that would probably be a bad thing for you. So, I would like to know if I had some kids get together, if you could answer the questions by yourself? Because there's a lot of kids that for ninety days are gonna be out of school, they have nothing to do. They can't play basketball on the street, there's no, the basketball sites will take you down from the park, and they're taking over there to the football field, they're still laying down the ground. So there's nowhere for the kids to play. They can't ride the bikes down Dolores, or Doris, and, uh, without, you know, same it's, it's, it's hazard, a park in here. And my second thing is, I'd like to know who wrote a check for four hundred and fifty dollars from the Curry, um, Golf Course to, to make a donation for Richard Rick Watson for the campaign on four, no, on ninety-four, two thousand and fifteen? If you'd like to answer that, you know, if not, I'll do a forty on it. And third of all, um, since you were wanting to annex, uh, an incorporated area into Cahokia, it's hard for me to understand why you aren't helping the people that are looking at a crater that's thirty feet deep, forty feet wide, that's not collecting mosquitoes, it's hazard feces that's coming up around Laurel Lee, and, uh, I mean, that was something, if you can't fix our streets, how are we gonna fix that? And if you're gonna fix anything, maybe you should help them too. Maybe ask your dad. So I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Next, we have Mr. Bill May.
Your honor, war leaders. We have interesting meetings here, we carry on the political process. We tend to overlook the many, many good things that we do together here in Cahokia. I don't know how many of you were not at a high school the past weekend, when the Rotary and Kiwanis did their pancake breakfast, and we had a community fair. If you weren't there, you missed a lot. This weekend, if, whether let's, community, uh, we're gonna celebrate Cahokia. We always talk about Cahokia, Cahokia this, Cahokia that. Uh, I've had friends who live in Chesterfield and Wyon, the boys, they have their problems in Cahokia. Come to the community fair, see what there is to celebrate. Get out of the mindset, we're all, again, when we should all be working together to make our town much better. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wade, for those comments. Uh, next, we have, Ms. Linda Jackson.
First, I want to thank you. I left, the last board meeting, I had mentioned about the concrete sewer pipe, and I know there were still a few pieces left, but they got moved and part of, part of the lot's all been empty, as far as it, or it's been mowed and that. Second, I've attended board meetings for years, and we're gonna go way back, and they always had police report and a fire department's report. Now, we never have a police report, and they say there is nothing. As of April twenty-seventh, the Conoco Station had been robbed, the Quick Stop on John Lane had been robbed, and Family Dollar had been robbed. I think the community needs to be aware of this. Now, I called the Val Valous Democrat, I called Carolyn Smith, and she said she calls down here, I don't know who she talks to, with a dispatcher, or who, but they tell her that nothing is happening. That's no way for us to find out about the news and what's going on. Uh, we could have crime watch, we could have people watching businesses, I mean, but if we don't know it, it's not gonna happen. So, uh, Carolyn told me that, she says, if I found out something, I can call her and she'd come down and report on it. But I don't, the police department does. The fire department used to give, had represented in here, and give us a report about the fires in Cahokia. Now, if a house burns down, and it's legally owned, I don't, I, I, I don't know what's involved with trying to notify the owner, if he's out of town, and say, you got X many days, which would probably be ninety, cleaning up your property, or you're gonna start being cited for it. That would at least take Cahokia off the hook as far as money they have to spend, and it would fall back to the homeowners. Most of them's got insurance on these houses anyway. And they would have to clean up their own property, and that would take a, a lot of the isolation out of.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for those comments. Next, we have, uh, Ms. Aldridge. You have a minute?
I've, I've been having a snake problem for like the last two weeks, so I can't walk in the house without seeing a snake. I keep my property cut. And the house next door to me has been abandoned, and they have a lot of crack throughout the yard and everything. The last time they cut the grass, I guess the city's doing it, I had seen gray over there, and they cut the grass that looked really nice. Somebody came by Monday morning and cut the front yard only, the backyard is high. I don't want these snakes around me. I don't know what to do about it, but I know that I keep my grass cut. So why can't they cut the back part if they cut it the last time?
Uh, Ms. Aldridge, uh, after the meeting, why don't you come see me, and then I'll get your information, and, uh, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Aldridge. Uh, next, we have Pastor Kate. Pastor Kate, pardon? Hold on, uh, wait, now Pastor Kate, is there anyone else that wanted to speak?
I have, um, okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was, I'm just wondering why the chief was not here tonight. I guess he chickened out, because I called him and told him about this, because of the different crimes, and now, KC called, they had one of them late at night, uh, let's see, that was their twenty-fifth, and then a week later, the same person got his windows busted out of a, a fire, I'm pretty sure it was a fire department vehicle, and there, like I said, I don't think anything's been done, but, and it needs to be recorded, and that's what I told him, he's made one report in a year that you've been on, and all kinds calling, nothing, like everything's fine here, and hey, that's, that's why people were telling me, hey, this one's moving out, that one's moving out? Because they got all these houses that have been half burned and just sitting, and there ain't a thing getting done about it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I will relay the message to the chief, the chief's at a mandatory conference this evening, that's why I, I attend.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't put my name on this, but can I say something?
Go ahead, Mrs. Wade.
So, about a month ago, we started a Facebook page, Cahokia Crime Watch, and if anybody, I put on there specifically, call the police first, but you can also go on there and put any crime that you know of that happened, so let all the citizens be aware of it. I know Brendan Kelly made a comment that he's glad he did it, and I'm gonna start getting monthly reports from the police department, put them on that page. So that's something we could do, without any help from them, but, that's one way to know about that.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Wade.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add what Walt said on KC number two, and the gentleman's car that got broke into was Ryan Allmeyer, he's a fire department, fireman, and, uh, it was six o'clock in the afternoon, or six o'clock in the evening. So, I agree with Walt, I mean, we need, we need something done about this stuff. I know, I know the police department is working on it, but I think it's, it's generally, general knowledge that, that we should have, in, in our neighborhoods. Uh, we need to know what, what's happened there, I mean, it, it affects us.
I agree, Mr. Wade, I agree with you.
Mayor, I'm impressed with what the chief.
Mr. Smith?
Been here a long time, I've lived in Cahokia all of, in sixty, forty years. Things come and go, things change. But when I have to go into a restaurant and take my grandkids, and there's somebody comes in that front door with their pants hanging down below their butt, it's very disgraceful to the elderly, to me, to my grandkids, and I'm not a racist person, I'm not, I think we need to stop it. I did, uh, when Cal Johnson and Trevon was on, what year was five oh nine, I did get five hundred signatures from everybody, white, black, everybody signed this paper, they said, they want to stop. I mean, you got sites, you got volunteer, everybody's got this, and I think it needs to be stopped. And if anybody's in this building says they don't like, they like it, is, they're wrong, I know they don't like it. And I think it would improve Cahokia, and I think it's up to the board to make it happen. We have Home Rule, we can make it work, we can stop it.
First, Mr. Wade, uh, my, me myself, not a fan of the same plans, uh, you know, it's, uh, I sit here today, I'm dealing with these kids at school, and.
They go to school.
I'm constantly on the kids' little, uh.
They come and get you, uh, with their silver home.
But, you know, it's, it's a little bit more to it than just, you know, suspending the kids because they're banned now, and this and, or, uh, as far as, you know, these fines, you know, now, I agree with you, you know, uh, something should be done, you know, as far as the pants saying, I'm, you know, I, I don't agree with it as well, but there are a lot of gray areas in between, uh, when you make a, a law force acting, and so, what I'll do is, I'm gonna take that under consideration, and I'll look at all, uh, all aspects of it, and I'll get back to you on it.
Got it.
And, uh, which, you know, because, you know, once again, it's a lot of gray area, but I'll get back to you on it, but I, like I said, I, I agree with you, I'm not a fan of it myself.
I appreciate you, but.
Uh, Mr. Pastor Kate, are you here? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm here, and could you excuse me just a minute?
No, you're fine, I understand you.
Okay, I'm down, go down, sorry, I'm here. Uh, my name is Pastor Katie Elgarden, and, uh, pastor of Catholic Church on Kemp Jackson Road. Uh, been there about five years, a little over five years. Uh, I started a, um, summer enrichment program, this is the third year for the summer enrichment program, and there, there are things for the children to do in this city. Um, make a daily money, advertising, or whatever that has not given totally all of the community, but there is some things for it to do. Uh, this is my third year in making with school, uh, to, to house find some of the new enrichment program. I initially started working with the youth, uh, in the, in the youth program in Eversville, Lincarver, Illinois area. So I'm like, if you know anything about Lincarver, some things about Eversville, then you know it was on the map, there was negative elements. And so, as a result of my work there, Southern Illinois University awarded me, with Dr. Martin McInnes Community Service, he managed during a war. And so, my church, I live in Swansea, but my church is in Cahokia, and I have the same ideal for work that my passion is for the youth, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-four. And so, the first year, I had nineteen children, last year, I had forty children, and I guess it's gonna, you know, the donors won't be contained, they're repaying, this year, I'm hoping that's the case. But anyway, there's a lot of, uh, enrichment for the children, I invite the public to join, me and my, uh, although my, my, uh, church, uh, is a overseer of the program, it's called New Direction Community Hope, and it's a subsidiary of my church, but if you notice the title, it's New Direction Community Hope, meaning that it's open for the community to join me, to spirit in. I really would love to bring a council of people together out of the community, the parents who are embracing the program, citizens of the community, we come together and help to make some, uh, profound positive decisions as to the direction of how great this program can go. And so, I know that by leaps and bounds, we are expanding, we have, we don't, and we're not a funded organization, we depend on whoever have a heart to give to the children to help. We've hunted for field trips, right now, we're standing at a point that, uh, we don't have adequate transportation. The first year, uh, the township, uh, South Hill Township, bused my children to the Cahokia mounds in the park, uh, the zoo, or whatever, but we're almost at a sense here with our field trips, because I don't have adequate transportation for all of the children. So, I wish that some church with a bus, or whatever, anybody with transportation adequate enough to help me with the program, so that he is can go into all these things, uh, you know, that is, uh, these children, I'm dealing basically with low income, at-risk, uh, children. And so, I'm looking for those children that are thrown away, nobody wants to do nothing with, you know, the known ones, the, the, you know, the children that are enough, you give me those children, give me those children, and I will make a difference in their life, because I know when they come to the program, they're issueatic. So we deal with the issues, and we ask the parents to reinforce what we start, to keep it going, we can get home, so that, you know, and I've had teachers come to me as a result of the summer enrichment program, with the children that have gone back to school for the following year, the following year, and, and the just, the, the attitudes and their behavior was just transformed. And so, I know a lot more can be done if people would just be with me, uh, and, and we catch the vision. The greatest thing that's going to happen, starting this year, in Cahokia, Illinois, we're going to be on the map. I have, uh, talked with the mayor of the city, I want to address the most troublesome areas in Cahokia, the crime ring, I have dealt with gang members, converted gang leaders of South Chicago, so I know about all of that kind of grassroots things that are going on. And so, we're going to have a community parade on the July the ninth, and we're gonna start in, I believe it's Ms. Pearson, one of the trustees, in her community subdivision of Bridge Dale, I think it's called, called Bridge Dale, and I have tried desperately to make contact with Ms. Pearson, and because I want to acknowledge her as the leader in that community, to let you know when we're gonna be joining your community, we're gonna have a full of flesh parade. And we want the people of the community to join in, in that parade, to, I always say, if you're gonna do something for people, including the North, you're gonna do it for the people. So I want this people in the community to join in this parade. We already got businesses on board, um, the city is, regional, they've already mapped our route for us, so I'm hoping that this will be for interest, and you join in with us to make a difference, and we chose Bridge Dale to do it there first, but each year, the boys will, each year, we will go to a, another subdivision, and we will do, to continue this, it's a perpetual thing, I'm hoping that every mayor that takes it, hopefully, Mayor McColl is a continuation for a good while. I'm hoping that every mayor that takes it, hopefully, Mayor McCall is a continuation for a good while, since he's giving us the privilege to do so and receive to make a difference. But whoever, I hope it continues for a lifetime, because it needs to happen. And it, we, the, our program is called New Direction Community Hope. New Direction Cohokea means, it means new direction, and it certainly needs hope for the community. So, I'm here, and I have a pain. I had a struggle in two thousand and two. But I've been doing this work since nineteen eighty-four, and after I came through all of my challenges and all, the lawyer said to me, "You, I want you to do the work that you did in the Eversville area, the identical thing. I want you to duplicate it, and so, I want you to make a difference in Cohokea." So, that's my challenge, that's my passion here, uh, to do this work. And I hope that the citizens of this community, it's not territorial. We're not territorial, it's open to all races. I have black and white kids in the program. Wonderful. In fact, a little, a young man, fourteen years old, won the KUH award. And the KUH award was, represents kindness, unselfishness, and humility. And so, these, these are the things we want to represent in this city. So, thank you so much for giving us this.
Thank you, Pastor Kate. And, uh, just, just for anyone else's information, if anyone wants to reach out to Pastor Kate after the meeting, feel free to. Also, uh, she's here with her assistant Veronica, Veronica, where is your hand? And you can go and speak with Veronica as well. And why don't you guys get with, uh, trustee Pearson and, you know, talk about some things after the meeting, okay? All right, at this time, anyone else have any further comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Day.
At Boyd Valley, for the past few years, we've had the same program, it's called St. Joseph's Record. Uh, the kids come in at nine o'clock, they're taught, they get up, lunch, and then about one o'clock, they go home. There's a lot of taught that's taught with, as the key, we need it throughout all of Cohokea.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And, uh, Mr. Day, I, I think that what we'll do is, uh, before school actually lets out for the summer, we'll get a listing of all the programs that, uh, the churches are offering throughout the village, and I'll be able to distribute it for, for you guys, okay? Uh, this time, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn to the meeting. Uh, I need a motion and a second. The time right now is six oh three. Motion?
Motion.
By trustee Bradford, second by?
Second.
By trustee Ware. Ware, roll call.
Pierce?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Wolford?
Yes.
Nichols? Ware?
Yes.
Sanderson?
Yes.
Evening adjourned, thank you, guys.